Of the Suffolk City School Board for Thursday, February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. This meeting is focused on the agenda items that you see before you if you collected an agenda at the back of the room. At this time, we are gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Board Member Jenkins, would you mind reading the mission statement?
The mission of the Suffolk Public Schools is to produce twenty first century learners that will become productive citizens in the society. Foster a dynamic, safe, and nurturing learning environment. Partner with school community for the benefit of the student and staff. Strengthen the school division by employing a highly qualified and diverse staff. Effectively and efficiently manage capital and human resources. Capable human resources, effectively communicate to increase community investment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking to the next item. I don't have the approval of the agenda. Don't we have to do that? Okay, so it seems that on your agenda, the approval of the agenda isn't on there, but I will go ahead and entertain a motion for that right now because I believe we have to do that first.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, based off of a prior conversation between you and myself. Could we table the Legislative Committee report from this agenda to our first meeting in March two thousand and twenty five, I believe it's March thirteenth?
Vice Chairman McGee, would you be willing to amend your motion?
I do.
Okay, so can you see the motion?
I amend my motion to move this to the March thirteenth meeting.
Second. The motion has been made to approve the agenda with the exception of the Legislative Report being tabled to the March thirteenth meeting. It has been seconded by Board Chair Jenkins. Are we ready to vote? Okay. Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slinglove?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Now, moving on to new business. The first item that is on there is an information item entitled Innovation Center Needs Research and Planning, and this time I yield the floor to Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really want to take the time to bring to the board's attention the very first attachment. You all have seen all of these attachments previously as we had heeded to the board's request of ensuring that information was going to be presented multiple months before it was time to make any action. The first Innovation Center Need and Research Document Memo Number Eight that was written on February eighteenth is a summary of all the other attachments that you have. As we previously discussed on January seventh at our organizational meeting and January sixteenth. Of our need to convert the former children's center space behind C cap to a space to be used by sixteen instructional specialists that are currently housed at Booker T. Washington Elementary School. The board had requested some background information and options for this request and recommendation by staff. Specifically at the February thirteenth business meeting, the board had, we put information into the attachments at the bottom. The January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five memo from the city of Suffolk that detailed the demolition of Freeney Avenue facility. I know that Mr. Riddick had inquired about the mobile units that were still there. The actual cost, since there was some discussion about the use of Drive Elementary, this is the actual demolition estimated cost summary from January twentieth. As well as information that we received from RRMM, our contracted architect, for preliminary work as we looked at other options for a new central office. For the Virginia Pallet Building, the challenges as identified by them on March eleventh, going all the way back to two thousand and twenty two. This was part of the request from Mr. McGee and looking at other options for the SAO to bring additional options to the board. And as I explained on that evening, we want to give the historical context of how originally. Central office was going to be moved into the Human Resources Building behind City Hall. However, the dedicated funds for that building and that renovation is six point five million dollars. Were moved to the John F. Kennedy Reconstruction and Renovation Project in order to make up the difference. We also had permission from the city as when they renewed our lease to take a look at the renovation of the first floor space in our current home at the professional building. That from dated was October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. We felt that SPS should not use taxpayer money and school funds to renovate a building that we were currently leasing. As well as going back to August ninth, two thousand and twenty two, the actual probable construction cost at that time for phase two of the Operations Center. This came into question because, as we know, Mr. Napier's team now has a new facility that is being leased by the city. So in order to be able to provide options to the board, we provided you with a final bids and request for proposals. You actually have two resolutions that will allow the board to be have, to have options on this project. The current HVAC system in the current children's center does need to be replaced. That is something that is not optional as the work needs to be done. The quote for this is actually two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and twenty seven dollars. Thank you, Mr. Napier, for working with Train to be able to provide us this quote. The successful bid and award was completed by G C Commercial for a total amount of seven hundred and seventy three thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars and forty six cents. That actually includes the HVAC work from Train. So we wanted to be able to provide the board with the Train quote that came in on February twelfth, as well as the awarded winner for the commercial bid that came in on February sixth. So staff has recommended to the Suffolk School Board to approve G C Commercial Incorporated for the renovation of the former children's center. To the Innovation Center in order to accommodate sixteen instructional staff that were formerly located at Booker T. Washington Elementary School. Again, we need the classrooms that the staff is currently in for the STEM Academy, which will begin next year, and the planning that will take place this summer.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I think at this time I'll allow questions before we move to the resolution. Does anyone have any questions, comments, feedback? No? Okay.
I have questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see.
I just wanted to give other board members an opportunity to ask questions. I didn't want to hog the time. But I understand the need for it. However, I'm still uncomfortable with it. This is something that has been brought to our attention fairly recent. And I'm wondering, is there any other builtness that is already in ready-made condition that we can move into? I know it was referenced to my request about the Freeney Avenue site, but what was the expert opinion regarding the two mobile units that's there? I'm just trying to figure out how can we best use what real property we do have? Before we make any other moves. And then my other question would be, where are these funds coming from?
Madam Chair. Okay, so the main reason why I included the demolition of Freeney Avenue's property, which includes those two mobile units, because those two mobile units are beyond use. Communication with Mr. Napier and the city has basically informed us that as soon as those mobile units would have been moved or touched, they would have collapsed. Mr. Riddick had also sent me additional potential property for us to take a look at as a lease. My main concern why we did not move forward with that proposal to the board is that is an additional cost to the city. And we are under the impression that the city is not willing to take on any new leases at this time. The second part of Mr. Riddick's request, is there any other real property that we have available for these sixteen instructional specialists to move into? The answer is unfortunately no because of the growing population of Suffolk Public Schools. As a reminder to the board, we currently have staff that is actually housed here at Kings Fork Middle School. We have some staff that is actually housed at C cap with our security specialist, Mr. Wilson. And as you all know, we have multiple staff members that are sometimes two, three, and four people in an office at the SAO. So this was the only real property that we had that was available that we felt that because we already own would be the best case for us for renovation. The second part, or actually the third part of your question, Mr. Riddick, is where these funds come from? Ms. Forzeman, I'm gonna call you to the podium just in case I forget any of the explanation with that. But this is actually part of our fund balance money that we are projecting to have at the end of the year. Mr. Riddick and all board members, if you all remember, approximately every May we bring to you all proposals. Just in case we do have money left over of the things that we want to do over the summer. That is because those projects will last over two fiscal years. Some of those encumbered funds that we actually have to give back to the city and then send them a memo and request for that money to come back. So these things come from salary savings, from changes of people are of lower experience than those that are currently in our system. If we have vacancies, and Ms. Forzeman, is there anything else I'm forgetting that kind of gives us that fund balance money?
No, and the term fund balance may confuse some folks because we're not allowed to have fund balance. So what Dr. Gordon is referring to is every year we have about a two hundred thousand dollar budget, a two hundred million dollar budget. And that budget, you always have something left, right? You don't spend every single thing. We try very hard to save our money and save things during the year. And so what we do at year end, we always have about one to two percent of our budget that may end up unspent. And I say that because in some years when the state has made a two million dollar error, we have no money, right? So barring something like that, we normally have one to two million dollars left over that we use to do things like paint buildings, fix sidewalks, fix sinkholes, buy buses, buy copiers, those kinds of things. And so what we would be doing this year is making the decision to do this project instead of some of those other projects. But it wouldn't be in addition to those projects, and we would bring you all those projects again in May as normal, and those would all be subject to, is their funds.
Right, and just to add to that, we also have used those funds that the board remembers to also do playground equipment, HVAC equipment, et cetera. And my last reminder to the board is, as you all know, we do not have a preventative maintenance budget. Because those funds are actually being used for the expansion of Northern Shores Elementary School. So many times when we're looking at our year-end funds, this is the reason why you all receive a memo. And Ms. Forzeman actually tracks the potential amount of money that we have left over. Now, the main key is we cannot ever overspend the budget that has been allocated. So we have to have something left over that we request back from the city. But we try to identify and be specific on what we would like to spend the money for. We always bring it to the board first, and then after you all approve it, it is then sent to the city. And then once the new fiscal or financial year begins, they generally allocate the money back.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Does anybody else have any questions or feedback?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Gordon, we spoke, you know, last night. One of the things I would like to see going forward, and I want to, you know, make it clear again. This is priority one. You know, this is option historical on what was presented, why those didn't work. But for instance, if we were to disprove this, or the funds were not there, I would like to see a second course of action outside of this option. On how we plan to attack this problem that's been identified. I'd like to see two other options presented to the board so we can have options outside of just what, you know, is desired. My second thing is what I would like to see going forward with the end of year funds is something with like an unfunded request at the beginning of the fiscal year. Where your team develops a list and we rack and stack and prioritize things that need to be, money, things that are not funded. But if we do have unfun, or if we do have fallout money, money at the end of the year. Grants, anything that shows up that were not in the original fiscal year budget, we already have a running list to go off of. That way, your team's aware of priorities and this board is tracking all the priorities for the city. I think that right there would alleviate a lot of the feelings of, hey, we're getting things last minute. You know, when problems have been identified back in the spring of last year when we realized, hey, Booker T. is gonna receive the STEM Academy. You know, I would have liked, I wasn't on the board there, but I would like to see if something like this happens in the future, there's feedback with the board immediately. That way, we're tracking your concerns and we can get behind you and support you, you know? Only left with one option. Is that something feasible that we can do where we come up with an unfunded request where we can prioritize you guys present that to the board of your priority items? So if there is extra money in the budget, we already know what we're gonna put that money for. Now, I get it, if something big pops up, we would adjust, that would be presented to the board. But I just feel like that would involve us a lot more and allow us to feel part of this process of due diligence on managing, you know, the budget, which we're responsible for.
Madam Chair. So a couple of things that you're requesting, and yes, Mr. McGee, you and I did talk about this yesterday. The first hangup that we're gonna have is I can't give you a list of unfunded projects until I get closer to the end of the year. After we have a chance to see how much money that we have left over. That's not only gonna be, that's really gonna be based on as we're tracking in the reports that Ms. Forzeman gives. If you all take the time to kind of compare the budget lines for everything that we have leading up to that point. So April, May is usually going to be the earliest time to be able to give you that because we'll have about forty five, you know, sixty days left of school. One of the things that you and I can sit down or whatever board members like to sit down is you can actually see some of the deferred maintenance costs that we have had. Like one of our major projects that we're looking at to do this summer is to paint Kings Fork High School, right? That is something that has been delayed in the past, but that is something that takes eight weeks to do. So we know that that's in the cycle because Mr. Napier and Ms. Forzeman have basically determined a replacement cycle for not only our equipment, but the actual upkeep. Now, we had to adjust that again because there's no preventative maintenance money out there. We can be able to provide you all options for the board to be able to look at, which is what we attempted to do tonight. This is where you have two options. You can either do the full renovation like staff is recommending because that request actually came in lower than the seven figures that we had actually talked about last month. Or the board can just do the HVAC rooftop units that have to be done in order to be able to have livables or workable space. Now, the main reason why we have recommending to the board to do the full renovation is, as a reminder, this was a children's center. So the actual toilets that are in this facility are really not for adult use. They are also in the middle of the facility, and I'm feel free, if any board member would like to see this facility, you know, even after this vote tonight, you can see specifically what I'm talking about. Where the original location had the classroom to the back left, the offices for the partner that we had for our childcare that was working through C cap for the actual program for our kids. And then they had eventually put some cubicles and very limited storage space behind that. So these renovations that we are looking at will allow our teaching and learning team to be able to to be able to collaborate. It will also be a professional learning space, and we have to be able to really upgrade the toilets, the facilities themselves, because again, they are not for adult use. So I did try to provide the board, kind of reading from what you said at the last meeting with the option for the full renovation or the HVAC unit itself. And then you'll see, once we come back to you all, two, you know, two months from now, you'll kind of see how we have prioritized what we can potentially do, if that money's gonna be left over. Because I don't want to make any empty promises to you all as a board, or any schools, or the school community, in September or October, saying, we're gonna have enough money left to, you know, paint three schools, when the bills come in, especially with the way inflation is right now. And then Ms. Forzeman says, we can't afford it, and then we all look bad. So I want to be able to try to be as precise as possible. This is why we always bring this to you all during the month of May. The board always comes, you know, takes action to determine if we can do it or not. But just remember that the city is not obligated to give us back any of those funds. We have to be able to justify the reasons for them, especially because these funds are gonna be spent over two fiscal years.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a couple of questions as well. In listening to Dr. Gordon and Ms. Forzeman about these year-end funds, and where this money is coming from, I'd like to talk a little bit more about where we're actually gonna have one and $2 million at the end of this fiscal, or the end of this, this year. Is this, and how much of this is coming out of employee positions that haven't been filled? And if that's the case, I'm just curious, why we haven't filled them? And are we planning to fund those positions in the next budget moving forward?
Madam Chair. And Ms. Forzeman, feel free to give any additional details I may leave out here. So the first part of your question, you're always gonna have salary savings, Dr. Brennahan. That's because the population of staff itself, there's been fluctuations in experience. We showed you salary savings that we will eventually have from going to the H E S contract. If the day that Wendy Forzeman retires with twenty-nine years of experience at that time, and we replace her with someone that has ten years of experience, that is a great example of salary savings. Now, the second part of your question, referring to, do we, do we expect to fill those positions? Yes. So when we give you all the staffing report that may have ninety reaching vacancies, we can't say that the following year that we don't need those teachers, because it's based on the total number of students we have, the SO Qs, and the student-to-teacher ratio. So we always have to have those positions in the budget, as well as to ensure that when Wendy does her projection, she uses step three for some positions, but also we have to include their insurance and benefits package. And you never know if an employee is gonna be a single employee with one person in that insurance package, or if they have the family plan. So Ms. Forzeman always takes quote-unquote "the largest scenario" to create, to ensure that we have enough money regardless of where the person may land on the salary scale, and what insurance and benefits plan that they will choose. Anything I'm forgetting, Ms. Forzeman?
No, sir, but I do want to make sure that the board is aware that we do know our money from the state. If you remember, we talked about the lottery's not guaranteed, the incentive money's not guaranteed. If we get, the state doesn't make that up. Okay? So we don't know those numbers, we don't get those numbers, we don't even have an idea of those numbers until late April, early May. I don't get the final from the state until mid-June. So what we bring to you is, we have a list. Terry and I have tons of lists of all these replacements, who we gave desk to last time, which desk were the first ones, the last ones dated, which schools were the last painted, which HVACs were the last ones redone, which roofs were the last ones redone, where copiers needed, all these things that are in the budget, numbers of white fleet or yellow fleet, all these things we keep track of. And so we try to see what we can do in May, and we, we basically do an estimate and say, okay, what can we put on here? Replacement of playgrounds became an issue several years ago, replacing playgrounds at that time, and we're down to one or two. So it's a moving list, but we keep track of who got what last. And that's what we bring to you in May, is just a list of those things. Now, we can give you that list in September, but we're not gonna know until April, May, if we could even do any of it. And that's why even in May, when I bring it to you, I don't have costs on it, if you notice, there are no costs there, because I still don't know if we're even gonna have the money to even consider it. So, and we're still getting estimates at the time of May, because you don't want to waste vendors' times by getting estimates for thirty days, and then you can't do it. Right? And so then your estimate's no good, you've gotta start all over, and by that time, June thirtieth has passed, and you can't even encumber it, an obligation. So it makes it a little more difficult for us to give you this list early in the year, because we really and truly don't know until we start getting those ADM, average daily membership totals, whether we're gonna get it. And even then, if I'm not watching sales tax, or we're not watching a penny, then we don't know what we're gonna get from the state. And the state final numbers, as I said, come in always mid-June.
Is there anyone else that would have a comment or a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
How does the creation of this education center address the future administrative needs, administrative placement needs? And then, let me just say what my reservation is straight out, so everyone will know where I stand. I don't want to put Band-Aids on a broken system. And I understand we got to be innovative in how we use our space. But looking at, do we have a strategic plan on really how we can maximize the usage of what we already have? Because the way I'm thinking, if Turnleton Woods only have an average of twenty or sixty at the most students, there's capacity and space there, where these funds can be moved back to covering sinkholes versus just doing this. Meaning, to me, it seems as if we are moving admin where we can put it, and I understand that's a tough thing. But admin is not being centralized anymore. And I understand that's beyond your control, but are we addressing future needs with this renovation?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for that question, Mr. Riddick. So a few things to answer. The baseline answer of your question is yes, because we are looking at professional learning spaces that will allow any department in central office, any professional learning community at a school, to have an additional location to be able to collaborate. This will also be an area that we can actually do professional learning ourselves. Your question, and you kind of alluded to at the end, about are we putting a Band-Aid on a tough situation? As you know, the city still hasn't found a location for us to build a new central office. Now, even after that office location has been determined, and both city council and the school board agree, then we're looking to twenty to twenty-four months of construction. That doesn't include the amount of time that it takes for six to nine months for design work, and two months for the bid itself. So when you add all that up, we're looking at three years, maybe three and a half total, before this resolution is going to finally be one centralized location, like we all want, Mr. Riddick, for the S A O. That's the challenge that we're running into. And remember, we had that conversation when we gave up the funds for the human resources building, because we wanted to make sure that we were prioritizing our students over the needs of central office. Now, here's the other caveat. The city also understands that the lease on our current professional building, I believe, expires in, is it 2028? I think it's 2028, I'm not sure, Terry, if you remember. But I think we still have three years. So the city's plan is to be able to match, by the time they have chosen a location, provided us the funds, the school system the funds to renovate, if the time that the lease expires. Because they don't want to be, still continue to pay for the lease in this professional building while we have moved into a new facility. So that's kind of a long way, Mr. Riddick, of saying that we know that whatever we do, this is gonna be three to three and a half years, potentially, of still not having the space for our students. And as you are well aware, because you track the proffers, this also means we will be able to keep up with the growth of our schools. And I'm just not comfortable having our staff take up classrooms when we know that we're gonna need it at our schools. So this is gonna be a multi-year need for the school division, but the only variable is gonna be determined by how quickly the city and the school board agree for a new location for the school administration office.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet have anything before I contribute? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I had a couple of follow-ups. I guess I'm gonna direct this to Dr. Gordon and Ms. Forzeman regarding unfunded request list. I guess for me, it's, we as a board, like right now, what makes this priority one over other projects that this school division's facing? Having a list, a predetermined list, would allow us as a board to track and have an idea of a lot of the issues that we're trying to find. I understand, Ms. Forzeman, we might not have accurate quotes, but I think having a racked and stacked list of prioritized items for the board, so we know, hey, these are our priorities. You know, we hear what your priorities are, but you know, there might be other priorities that we see as a board that are more fitting to address academic issues, address safety issues, and other concerns. I agree, you know, we need to be a professional school division. Our administrators, our teachers, they should all have their dedicated space, you know? It's 2025, Suffolk is growing. I want us to be an innovative city. I want people to look at us and say, hey, they have it in order, they have their things together. But right now, in our city, do we not have teachers who work for Suffolk Public Schools that do not have their own class space? Do we have teachers who work in mobile units? Do we have kids in mobile units? So, you know, for me, I understand the desire, I understand the want, you know, I agree with it. I definitely agree with it. These are professional administrators. They should have dedicated office space, dedicated restroom space. But my understand, for me, my understanding, what prioritizes them over other people who might be in their same boat, where they're transient, they don't have a permanent office space?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. McGee, for asking that. I know that was also a part of a conversation that we had. So I want to make sure that the board and school and community is well aware that we are talking about two different pots of money. A, the references that Mr. McGee made, which is legitimate to teachers being on carts, overcrowding that we have at Nance High School is an example. Those are all funded by our capital improvement plan, once again, money that is allocated and appropriated to us by the city. School board does their recommendations, the city always has the flexibility to be able to change that. What we are doing with this project is using the funds that we already have, using space that we already have, to be able to do an upgrade to an area that, right now, is not being used. What makes this a priority over the other options? Mainly because of the ordering of equipment. Part of the reason why we had brought this to the board and let you all know about it in January, is because we wanted to make sure the board was aware before we put the R I P. out, but also to ensure that we can get this HVAC equipment here in time, so that this project can be done, hopefully by the end of this summer, maybe early fall, so that we can have our folks in place to start the school year. Mr. McGee, you mentioned student achievement and instruction. Remember, this is teaching and learning. This is the team that develops the work that our teachers do. This is a team that will be able to support our schools, because everyone in central office, that is our primary job, right? To be able to support our schools. So the reason that this is a top priority, and it's not the only one, I just gave you like another Kingsfork, we're believing that we can do multiple, but we're bringing this one to you right now because of the timing. That's the reason why the board's made it very clear, they didn't want to have seven days to make major decisions like this. This is why I brought this to you all, the organizational meeting on January seventh, seven weeks ago. And we've had conversations and communication about that with informational items. You and I have talked on the phone, Mr. Riddick and I have talked on the phone, about some of the other things that he potentially wants to see at the C cap site, if we do move forward with this. This is something that is needed, because it supports the school. I don't want this, this, the school division, I don't want this thought to be out there that this is just for administrators. This is the teaching and learning department. Our specialists that are there are former teachers, teachers that do the work, that come in and work with our schools and their PLCs, curriculum alignment, pacing guides, and the maps. This is what they do, and now we will have a greater chance, because part of the reason why you've seen such great gains at like a school such as Booker T. Washington, because they were all there together. We want to be able to continue that process and mimic that by moving them to a school that actually has more space, so we can have other groups and people, individuals and employees from our schools come over and use that space as well. So it's still always gonna be about the student achievement, and I agree with you 100% there, but this is a priority because of the HVAC equipment, and the actual work that needs to take place, hopefully, when the school year starts.
Thank you. I know Vice Chairman McGee has one question he forgot, and then I'm gonna take my turn to share my questions and feedback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gordon, this is one thing we spoke on yesterday, but what would happen if we denied the vote tonight, and this wasn't approved, or funds didn't show up? What's your, what's your plan of action in the event of that?
Mr. McGee, so we begin to basically piecemeal, where we may have two or three specialists at one school, we may have, instead of having two or three people in the office at the S A O, we go back to having four people in the office before we move these individuals out. I think my biggest concern is just being able to properly use our buildings and classrooms for the way that they are originally designed. So my plan is to actually not support our staff if the decision is made that we don't, or that we can't do this. You know, with the new accreditation and accountability system, with the new S O L standards that are, have been coming down pretty quickly, as you all know, accreditation and accountability just got finalized like last month. The work that Dr. Branch's team and Dr. Branch's team does is so important right now, especially because people have questions, because everything's new. So our biggest concern is the inability to collaborate with the efficiency that we want. One of the things that you and I have talked about is trying to continue to find ways to make sure our school division operates as efficiently as possible. Doing this does that. And then, because we know, as Mr. Riddick and you just said, that our school division is growing, this means that those staffs might be in the space for twenty-five, twenty-six, whatever school they go to. And then because that school population grew, they might be in a different space in twenty-six, twenty-seven. We won't be able to fully address that need until we have a new school administration office, which I know will be a topic of our joint meeting coming up soon.
Thank you. So just to clarify some points that I've absorbed, in reflecting back to Board Member Riddick's comment that we are putting a Band-Aid on it, I liken it a little bit more to triaging, because it's, it's a bit more urgent to handle or begin the process of, versus, you know, with a, with a Band-Aid, you're fixing something simple, hoping, you know, it repairs itself down the road, or, you know, you get, you buy time to find a better solution, and it sounds a lot of, of what we need to make this a holistic, wholly beneficial approach for our S A O depends upon funding from the city, or, you know, possible building grants from the state. There are rumors those may be rolled out, I'm not sure, because, you know, General Assembly has concluded, but the governor hasn't. I have, so Vice Chairman McGee took one of my questions. I wanted to know specifically what happens if the will of the board doesn't approve this, and you answered that, for the most part. What I understand is we piecemeal, put people where they can fit, and it's a fluid assignment. You know, they may last their year, they may have to move after the first two, three weeks of school numbers roll in, the December one sped count, things like that. So it is, it is constantly fluid. And I understand that the goal of all this is student achievement. Particular team that we're looking to house is the one that's most closely working with our teachers to impact students. is the one that's most closely working with our teachers to impact student achievement, I guess on the ground level, being in charge of teaching and learning. A couple of questions, I guess logistical questions here. If, if this money that we would use is, is money that we would then have to reduce back from the city after June 30th? No, not in, so we would be doing an operating budget shift? Sorry. You can shout from your seat.
No, what Dr. Gordon means by going over two years is that we would identify this year, we have this amount of money, and then we would have to come back next year and tell them, okay, we've identified this amount of money, and we'd like to move it to this project and fund it out of next year's operating budget.
Okay, so you're, so if it is affirmed tonight, the work doesn't begin this year, is that correct?
It does. Part of it will begin because we'll need to order the HVAC work. So the HVAC systems will take 10 to 16 weeks to get here. So if we don't get those ordered, we don't really even have a prayer of getting this off the ground. It needs to happen no matter what. One thing that I haven't heard from anyone, and Dr. Gordon, if I may, Dr. Gordon, is this building is sitting empty. We all know what happens when a building sits empty. The HVAC has, has to be replaced. We can't even put kids in classrooms in this building because of the restrooms and stuff. So what this plan is laid out is really to keep it as fluid as possible. It's going to have cubicles in it so that they can be removed. Then that leaves enough space for classroom. You're not, we're not cutting it up into offices. We're leaving space so that it can be flexible to whatever we decide to do in the future. So I don't see it itself as anything more than an investment in this building. Because if you don't invest in this building, it's just going to basically rot around you. And the kitchenette that's in there, it's a little teeny kitchenette, is in terrible shape. The bathrooms aren't, aren't in good shape. It's got a roll door on the back of it and concrete flooring in part of it, and it's, it's just not conducive to even having students in there at this point. And so the longer in an empty building, we know what happens. We saw Drive, or we saw other buildings. This is an empty building. It's an opportunity for us to renovate it and make it feasible so we can use it for other things in the future.
Okay, so let me follow up with, I guess, oh, word my question a little differently. How can we approve it tonight and go ahead and order HVAC? If, if these funds were technically designated somewhere, like say, unfilled positions, how does that work logistically to approve it, order the HVAC, and it's not April or May yet? So we don't have a solid number of what will be left over?
Right. So what I do is I look at several, looking at the budget. I look at individual programs, and then I look at the entire budget. And I, I monitor very much that we spent each month, how much is the total as accumulation of the months, and what do we have left after that if we receive about 97% to 98% of our revenue? I have historically, over the past 10 years, benchmarked our revenue, and I can give you some ideas of each year fluctuations. But basically, I can give you an idea, if all goes well and nothing is wrong, what we would do. And so we have a little bit of money in our fuel, instance, that we have not yet spent. We can't order buses because they're two years away, and we can't obligate something two years from now. And so we could take that money, again, if this is approved, we could go back and say, hey, can we move this fuel money to order this $200,000 worth of equipment? That's how this all works, is we have to, once you say yes, then we go and identify where we feel we can bring it. Then we come back to you and say, okay, we, we identified the money, it's coming from this program, this line in the program, and goes to another program. Some of you have been on the board a few years. Remember that I bring budget transfers occasionally to the board and tell you why we're doing it, what's happening, where is it coming from, where is it going to, so that it's completely transparent to you what we're doing.
Thank you. Okay, so my last question, I guess, is a bit of a logistical question for me as a chair to know how to navigate the agenda. If the will of the board approves the first resolution, you said that GC Commercial includes the HVAC work.
Includes the installation of the HVAC work.
Pardon?
Installation of the HVAC work. So we would have to get, we would have to get a separate quote for just that portion.
So both resolutions are required regardless of how the first one is, is that correct?
The second one is the $203,000 is the cost of the HVAC equipment, correct?
To start this, to even start this moving forward, the board, if the board tells us to order the equipment, obviously, we're going to need to install it. So we would have to identify if they can pull that out of their quote and make sure that we can do that with them, or go out and get another quote to have it installed and bring that back.
Okay, I see. That's all that I have. If there are no further, um, one additional question, Dr. Brittingham?
I just want to clarify one more thing. So you were just talking about fuel costs and that you bank it for two years, and that would be an area that you would take money from to start this project?
No, what I, what I said was the fuel costs this year are lower, and I may have the money there. I'd have to identify and bring it back to the board. If we were to try to buy buses at year end, if someone were thinking we were trying, we can't obligate funds for two years, and it's taking 18 to 24 months to get a bus.
So you're saying that there's money in the budget already that, for ordering buses, and that we may not be able to do that, and that might be an area?
No, I'm saying there is no money in the budget for buses either, but if we wanted to use this money for buses, we wouldn't be able to obligate it because we can't obligate for two years.
I just want to add to that, Ms. Forsman, we actually ordered buses for, that we still haven't received yet, and we're projected to get those buses, I think, in November of 2025, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's just an example, Dr. Brittingham, of what we're saying. This is part of the reason why we won't be moving forward. And as a reminder, we never asked the city of Suffolk to pay for our buses. That is something that we do on our own because we know that our capital improvement needs are top priorities since we have so many schools that are overdue with renovation.
Okay, one last point for clarity. Um, so we, if it's approved, the next step would be to order the equipment ASAP. And if that is the case, um, you've identified some potential areas to do that. You would then have to bring it back to us again as a budget transfer request?
I would bring you the budget transfer at our next meeting and let you know where I found the money, where it was going from and to.
And that's just for the equipment?
Just for the equipment.
So can you explain to me how the '25, '26 budget came this coming for the remainder of the project?
Sure. If, if in fact, and this happens all the time, if in fact, we do not have funds at year end, reference the year that the state made the $2 million error. A lot of things couldn't happen that year. So then we had to push some things into the new fiscal year and then figure out how to fund them. And this would be the same thing. If we could not fund the entire $700,000 this fiscal year, we could not identify the money, then we would simply, knowing that it's going over the summer into next year, fund only the portion that happens before June 30th out of current year funds, obligate what we knew we could obligate without overspending, and then go into next year and find the funds and obligate them.
Okay, I think I understand.
Madam Chair. Sorry, I just have one, um, one question because it ties into multiple conversations here. So if we have money, if we approve this, money at the end of the year left over, and that is allocated towards this, going to Chairman McGee's point of the wish list, if you will, which I think is what we take into the encumbered discussion every year. What other things, I know this isn't bumping anything on the CIP, what other things, though, do we have need of within our school system that could be taken care of with the monies if they were not allocated to us?
Yeah, I don't have that list with me, but I have a comprehensive list of things that are outstanding. You'll hear some of them tonight with the unfunded items on the, on the budget.
But I'll, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I'll, uh, address a part of that, though, Ms. Slinglove. So I think the best example that you can use is if we get large amounts of rain, we know that we always have these sinkholes that pop up, Ms. Slinglove, that sometimes we can fully fill, sometimes we can send our diapers into, sometimes we rope off the areas, depending on how much traffic there is from pedestrians, or staff, or the school community. Those are some of the tough choices that we make. Ms. Forsman has already spent over $7 million in sinkholes, and, you know, we're about to hit the spring season, and I think you all have realized that if we get three days seems to be the number of consecutive downpours, we are basically crossing to ensure that we don't have a sinkhole somewhere. So it's the choices that we have to make when the problem kind of pops up. I wish, Ms. Slinglove, I could give you more specific answer on to some other things because it kind of goes back to what Ms. Forsman said. We know the last time HVAC equipment was replaced at this school, that might be something. We know the last time a roof was replaced at this school, and depending on the feedback that we get from Mr. Napier or the principal of that school, their experience in leaks and stuff like that, that might be something that happens. Ms. Forsman gave the example of, we noticed that our elementary school playgrounds several years ago were out of date, need to be modernized, also had some rust. We worked on replacing those as part of encumbrances that you saw in schools such as, that also includes our special education playgrounds as well. So when it goes to her list, we look at the date of replacement, repair, and needed renovation. We look at the total cost, then we choose. Because we never have enough money, as you know, to do everything that we not even want to, need to do. So I can't give you more specifics of those things because, besides me knowing that we have Kings Fork High School that needs to be painted because it's past due, and knowing that we have a building that if we don't do work to it with the HVAC, it's going to deteriorate. We've kind of identified those right now as top two priorities, mainly because they're ordering equipment for Innovation Center, but also the amount of time that it takes to paint our largest high school at 236,000 square feet. That's approximately weeks. So that's something I can jump on immediately just to make sure that that's also going to be ready for the next school year. So I will be able to answer that question for you a little bit more in May. Ms. Slinglove, after Wendy has a greater chance of taking a look, how much money did we have left? And then being able to review the list since she's in front of her to determine the top priorities.
Thank you, everyone, for participating in the discussion. Hopefully, uh, everybody gained a little better understanding of, of the question before you. Number two, under new business, is Resolution 24 slash 25 dash 20 a resolution of the school board for the city of Suffolk, Virginia, approving an award to GC Commercial Incorporated pursuant to a written invitation for it issued by Suffolk Public Schools? So at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Move.
Okay, the motion has been made to approve the resolution. It's been seconded by Board Member Jenkins. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, sir.
I just want to put this, um, when you hear me reference strategic, I want us to get from the habit of using pockets. I want us to insight and see how we can encompass that whole area, and I'm talking about making an outstanding C cap campus. So when I say strategic, what we're doing at Innovation Center, I want that to be a part of that strategic plan as into how we're going to grow C cap. So when we get our new admin building and move all our admin staff into one centralized location, we're not stuck with space that outdates what our needs are. Everything is working together in tandem and phases. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the privilege.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, we're ready. Board members, please vote. Board Member Dr. Brittingham?
No.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slinglove?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell, motion passed.
Thank you. Looking at number three, under new business, Resolution 24 slash 25 dash 21, a resolution of the school board for the city of Suffolk, Virginia, approving an award to Train U.S. Incorporated pursuant written proposal referencing the Omni Cooperative Contract for Replacement HVAC Rooftop Units Located at Proposed SPS Innovation Center. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
It's been moved by Board Member Riddick to approve. It's been seconded by Board Member Jenkins. Is there any discussion? Okay, we are ready to vote.
Board members, please vote. Member Dr. Brittingham?
Yes.
Board Member Fields?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Slinglove?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Board Chair Howell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Um, number four has been tabled to March 13th, so we're now moving on to the superintendent's proposed budget for '25, '26 school year, and I'll yield the floor to him.
Madam Chair, I'm going to move down to the podium. As usual, Ms. Forsman and I can tag team this subject. I'm not sure if I've ever been down here, uh, at Kings Fork Middle School, I've done it at other locations. This is also HBCU day, so I'm wearing my parents' Virginia Union University maroon and gray. As usual, we want to be able to take the time to kind of go over the budget. I am excited about the dialogue that we have had with our board members, uh, when we did our two-by-two meetings, beginning with, um, Dr. Brittingham and Ms. Slinglove, and ending with Chair Howell. Thank you to Ms. Gardner for sitting in on those meetings with us because we had a total of 48 comments and questions that the board members have. It was great engagement, and we also have a pretty interesting timeline that we've stuck to. I want the board to keep in mind that May 7th, more than likely, is going to be the million-dollar date that hopefully the city will determine their appropriations to us, and I know they will have joint meetings and public comment coming from the school community at our March 13th meeting. So here's going to be our agenda. I'm actually going to take care of the first four bullets that you see on there from the timeline process and input, the strategic plan itself, because as you all know, it was our goal to tie everything within our proposed budget to our strategic plan, Destination 2028. The challenges, I kind of gave you guys an overview of that, but we'll go into some further detail. Some of the unfunded needs that our schools asked for, we had to make some tough decisions. And then Ms. Forsman will step in for the structure of the budget book. Thank you, Ms. Gardner and Ms. Johnson for distributing that to the school board. Also, a proposed budget by category. As soon as we are done with our presentation, we will have the Ask a Budget Question link will be on the website. Also, in full transparency, Mr. McGee had also requested any questions that we receive from school board members during the timeframe that I know that Ms. Howell will mention later, we will also pose those so that the school community can see some of the discussions and questions that the school board may have had. So here's our timeline, our overview. Uh, it was even more interesting this year because of, once again, of us starting pre-Labor Day. We actually start our budget process the same week that we start school. And the conversation is the timeline overall for our school administrators, but also our directions to them to make sure that they get input from their leadership teams and the faculty. We had our first conversations with you all, the board, primarily in October, when we began to ask for your requests to be able to try to find some common themes, to make sure that we had school board voice, because after you all approve the budget, the budget is officially yours. Our public stakeholders, you know that we have two opportunities for our school community to chime in. That is both December and our upcoming meeting in March. And then we begin to filter. This is when our central office staff, our school administration office staff, begins to take a look at what the requests are. And this is actually, ladies and gentlemen, where we separate the wants from the needs. Thank you to all of our coordinators, our directors. They sit with their respective chief, and they literally go over every request that came from every school. Ms. Forsman and the chiefs, Ms. Gardner and I take a look at all the requests that came from our school board, and then we also notate conversations that we may have had out in the community. Then the next level of funneling happens with myself and the four chiefs. That takes two months. Some of it's because of winter break, but some of it's because we know that we have now received the governor's budget, as I explained to you all, that occurs usually the third week in December, kind of aligns with when we get out for our winter break. And then as we're tracking things through the Journal Assembly, I want to thank Mr. Waller, also want to thank Tom Smith, our person with VAS, and J.D. Kessel, the VSBA, that helped to lobby. I was also served as the chief lobbyist with both the House Education and Finance Committee and Senate Finance Committee to make sure that the superintendent voice was present. And then we bring this back to you all. I always will wait to do this the last Thursday in February. And that is strategic because we know that the Journal Assembly usually ends the Saturday before. And we know that sometimes amendments and adjustments that occur, but right now, we're at that waiting time. Because now that the Journal Assembly ended on February 22nd, the governor has until March 24th to determine what he's going to keep, what he's going to adjust, and what he's going to veto. And that's usually right around the same time that the board will be able to meet, to approve the budget with any potential changes or adjustments that you all may have. Soon as you all approve the budget, it goes to the council. And I know this is going to be a top priority and discussion for the tentative dates that we have set forth in April. I believe it's April 9th is what Ms. Howell had informed me of for the joint city council and school board meeting, where not only will we discuss the Suffolk Public Schools priorities, but also take a look at the expenditures. the Suffolk Public Schools priorities, but also take a look at the expenditures and priorities that we have from the city. My conversations with City Manager Moore, my conversations with Ms. Howell, this is the reason why I specifically mentioned that May 7th date, because per the Code of Virginia, the city must be able to tell us how much money they're going to appropriate to us by May 15th of every year. And so that May 7th date is when they have their first city council meeting in May. Now, the good thing about that is we actually have a school board meeting scheduled for the very next day. So Ms. Forrester is going to be working behind the scenes, knowing her should probably be working all night, to see if there's going to be any adjustments made from city allocations. This will allow you all as a board to hopefully be able to adopt a budget on May 8th, and the reason I'm requesting that to you now is because that then sets our clock to distribute contracts. It's our goal to be able to have all contracts with those folks that have intentions to return to Suffolk Public Schools mainly completed by the time we get off of Memorial Day. This allows our principals and our department leads to be able to plan, but it also allows our human resources department to be able to plan. So here are the common themes from all the stakeholder input, from all the conversations we've had, and some of these are repeats from things that we've done from previous years. Safety, as we all know, is our top priority. Again, a lot of people think that the school division's top priority is to instruct, is actually to ensure that every staff member, every student, every visitor to our school is kept safe. Student growth and literacy, this is all about the instruction. You all have heard me talk about the Virginia Literacy Act. You all also know about four new S O L standards in core content areas within a four-year timeframe. The first, since 1998, when S O L started, that all four occurred at the same time, especially when you add that on to the new accreditation accountability system that I mentioned earlier. I also made a promise, as Mr. Riddick and Ms. Jenkins will confirm, when I first got this job on October 14, 2019, the very first budget meeting that I had in town halls, I promised our school community and our staff that we were going to raise staff pay. We had done that every year, and we're proud to say that we have raises within our budget again for this year. So as a part of Destination 2028, the first one, we're going to talk about the student achievement. English language learners, this is our fastest-growing population in Suffolk Public Schools, and we've seen the largest growth in Mac Ben Junior Elementary School and Florence Bowser Elementary School. Based on the S O Qs, we asked for three English language learning teachers to be added to our overall instructional staff. Also, Florence Bowser Elementary School, our largest elementary school, as Ms. Howell can attest, at 933 students, according to what Dr. Taylor shared with me on Friday. The instructional data, especially with having a larger E L L population, shows that we need to have a reading specialist added there. We also know dual enrollment costs, one of the things that Mr. Riddick has talked to me about continuously is ensuring that we continue to grow our partnerships and allowing our kids to be able to save money with associate degrees. We have a great partnership with Kemp Community College. Dr. McCrae and I talk and meet all the time, and as I share with you all in our two-by-two meetings, the Commonwealth of Virginia is not allowing to have these tuition spikes anymore. I think the highest you can go up is 3%, but that also includes our community colleges as well. Programs such as summer school, in-person tutoring, and Saturday Academy. If you all remember last year, Dr. Branch and Mr. Wagner did a presentation on Saturday Academy. However, these three things were actually covered in the All-In Grant that expires on June 30 of 2025. The academic coach here at Kings Fork Middle School, we have some students that need some additional supports. And even though Kings Fork Middle School is fully accredited, we are trying to be proactive, ensuring that they can continue that accreditation, especially with four new core content area S O Ls and a new system coming in place in one year. I've talked to you all about the Virginia Literacy Act, great presentation by Dr. Shabazz, Dr. Branch, as you all have met the entire team. This has been a key from the Virginia Department of Education, and we are all 100% supportive of the science of reading. However, we would be even more supportive of the science of reading if they gave us the money to do it. So this is something that we actually have included in our operating budget. Regional tuition, that's for programs such as the Governor's School of the Arts that is in Norfolk, that probably about 12, no, 11 of the school divisions in Region Two participate in. We have to pay per student to go there, and we've actually increased that enrollment in Suffolk. We've actually increased that enrollment entirely for the entire division. We're up to 426 kids when two years ago, we were at 374. And I've already spoken to you all about the literacy and math software. Math is always going to be our second key component along with literacy, and Kelly Green's team has done a great job from the work that they have instilled, curriculum map, pacing guides, the instructional planning that occurs over the summer, also ensuring that we have teacher voice in there. But we have to be able to make sure that we have software so that our students can reinforce these skills on their Chromebooks. For climate and culture, this is something that I think four of the school board members put on there, and in talking to all 11 of our elementary principals, they are all for this. We have put into this budget to add an elementary S R O to each one of our elementary schools. I want to thank Sheriff Miles and the Sheriff's Department for their routine check-ins and making sure that they're also visible in our schools. That will now move to a second layer of support. This is the largest big rock item that we have in our budget, to make sure that we have S R Os in all 11 of our elementary schools. I also want to thank both our city manager, Mr. Moore, and Chief Bowie, who have confirmed to me that they believe they will be able to properly staff this and make this happen. As we all know, everyone, every officer cannot be a S R O. There's actual training that goes into place with that, and Chief Bowie already has some cadets that are interested. I know that Mr. Riddick and Ms. Howell went to meetings with the Transportation Association, just like we try to raise teacher salaries and everything else to make sure that we're competitive, we've been doing the same thing with transportation as well. We are still waiting for the day where we have 100% of our transportation staff that's available. But I do want to be able to thank those drivers who have volunteered to have extra runs, and we can continue to try to find some other incentives and ways. Ms. Howell had a meeting with Ms. Forrester and I, where she gave us feedback from the association. Mr. Riddick gave me feedback from the association in a conversation on some different things that we can do for those incidents at the end of the year that we think we'll be able to handle. Staffing specialists for human resources, our human resources department and our budget and finance department are two of the smallest departments in the entire region. And one of the things that we have noticed is that many of our administrators were actually doing the screening of applicants, going to the front line, checking credentials, trying to work on staffing, while they still should be focused on instructional leadership and building management. We believe that this is a HR responsibility. This is a position that we're going to add immediately, and the main reason we're going to add this position immediately is because it is hiring season right now, especially with some of our new programs that we have out there, such as associate teachers. These are some of the things that we think we can do right now to get an early jump before we get to our contract at the end of the year. Zero eye security, you all know I hate to talk about all of our different security measures, but this is something that we added last year that allows us to have the software. Thank you, Mr. Littlefield, on our exterior cameras at our schools. The research says that any time there's an active shooter or a serious incident, whoever the assailant is usually brandishes that weapon 30 seconds to one minute before. With this software, our Suffolk Police Department, as well as the individuals in Dr. Brown's office, get an immediate notification, and we will believe that we can have people on site before the assailant even enters the school. And as we all know, especially as a former athlete, athletic trainers are key. This is a Virginia High School League mandate. We must have those at Lakeland, Nansman River, and Kings Fork High School. But athletic trainers are not cheap. O B C Centaur needs to make sure that this is a rate that is attractive so these individuals don't go into the private sector. Making sure that we have athletic trainers at our events at all of our high schools is something that we must continue, and that prices actually went up over the years. So here's a slide that every time I put it on when we were having our school and department budget meetings, they always cheer. I see their faces smile and things of that nature. The governor said that we must have for all full-time employees a 3% raise. One of the things that we've done and the board has supported is the longer you stay here in Suffolk, you have a greater chance of having even more of a raise than what's mandated by the state. But I do want to caveat and let the board know that just because the governor or the state says that you must give a 3% raise, it would be nice if they gave us all the money for the raise. That does not occur, but we have one of the best chief financial officers I've ever seen that finds ways, because she studies this stuff in her sleep, and I can tell when that is happening because she's texting me at like 6:45 in the morning because she couldn't sleep and think about it. We made the promise that we were going to increase teacher pay. Our starting salary this time is going to be $56,975, an $1,800 increase on what it was last year. You all also know, I talked to you about this during our two-by-two meetings, how inflation is hitting us all. There's running jokes that you see all the time on TV and on your social media about the cost of eggs. The same thing occurs for the cost of a case of paper that a little while ago was $18, but now was $31. This board also made it very clear that they want to have an increased budget for Mr. Waller and attorney services to give him more flexibility for more support if needed. You know, we have attorney services and all the work that Mr. Waller does, but we also have Bay Corps that we use as a backup for legal services and support as a part of our insurance partnership. So here's the history of teacher raises, and I know the board has seen this slide before. All of our staff has now seen this slide, but this is probably the first time this slide has been presented to our school community. You can see the conscious effort of having a 23% increase over five years, and if I were to go back another year, it was probably right around $45,000. If I would go back a year before that, the year I started, it was right around 43,800. Now, we're going to have a $56,000 to 975, again, approximately an $1,800 increase. Ladies and gentlemen, you can see fluctuations that we have in the total percentage of increase we've had for the salary scale. Those fluctuations in increase were the time where we were getting extra money from ESAR, from CARES. So some of the things that normally were part of our operating budget, we could then put onto the grant. Because we put that onto the grant, we could then use that money to increase teacher pay. And I can publicly say to you all right now, if it is determined that we are going to get more money from the state, you will see us come back and do a revision to increase this even more. As Mr. Riddick and Ms. Jenkins will confirm to you, we actually had one year that we had taken Suffolk Public Schools to the third highest in the entire region for teacher salaries. And then an emergency meeting was called by one of my friends three days later to make sure they were $500 more than us. Suffolk Public Schools, when I first got here, was ninth when it came to... John, I don't know what's happening there. It was ninth when I came to teacher salaries. Now, we jumped up to third, fourth, we're probably right in the middle of the road with this, and we're taking the time to try to study what our colleagues are doing, because the question always comes out in our Region Two meeting, right? How much of a raise are you going to give to your teachers? I have learned to not answer that question, especially because I know that some of our other folks may have a budget presentation after me. But I am pleased to see there's a 20% increase over five years. Thank you so much, Mr. Littlefield. So we talk about all the things that we want to do, but I also have to be very transparent with you all and our school community about the challenges. I already spoke about the governor's budget that comes out the third week in December, but there was only a minimal increase to Suffolk Public Schools, a total of about $3.2 million. That, and we also had to take in consideration the local composite index that also lets us know how much money we're going to get from the state. That $3.2 million covers about 60% of the raise, as an example. But we were also told that we have to have English language learning teachers. We were also told that we must do the Virginia Literacy Act. So this is the reason why we have so many checks and balances and courageous conversations with our principals, department leads, coordinators, directors, and then finally myself and the chiefs to make those tough decisions. The All-In Grant, when we first got it, great idea, that we're going to give us $5.8 million to fight learning loss from the pandemic, to fight chronic absenteeism. However, that expires on June 30th of this year. The cost of transportation for special education students, not only is that some of the things that we do with our normal buses or our buses specifically for special education, but as the conversation that we had with Dr. Brittingham and Ms. Sling Love, when we made them aware that we also have some of our students who, for their own safety, can't ride the bus, or for the safety of other students, or for the safety of the driver. So remember, we're talking about plexiglass windows, special seat belts, restraint and seclusion training, and the overall insurance that we have to have for these students? Because in order to have a free and appropriate public education, sometimes this actually means door-to-door service. And every student, regardless of the disability, needs to be educated here in Suffolk Public Schools. And the last thing I put on there was inflation. You all know it, you've seen it when it comes to the cost of bread, but you've also probably seen it when it comes to your cable bills, your power bills, your utilities. School divisions are not immune from inflation. So I want to dig in a little bit to the All-In Grant, because I know that we have some new board members, but also to be able to recap what this money was spent for. Under those three categories there of tutoring, attendance, and literacy. Now, we all know, staffing reports that you all get a couple of times a year, we have before and after-school tutoring. The before-school tutoring is primarily probably at the elementary level. The after-school tutoring is middle school and high school, depending on what the students have to do. But that also includes any virtual instruction that we may have for supports. But any areas that we had long-term subs, and you all knew about our partnership with P C G University Instructors, so that we had a second layer, because we too were concerned that we may not have had people in those positions that were certified to teach. But the tutor is a content specialist in that area. Saturday Academy, we've talked about, we've done the presentations on that. Our next Saturday Academy is actually March 8th. That information came in a couple of days ago, and Mr. Wagner does a great job in running that. You've also seen us highlight the schools that we had and send us for attendance, right? That's part of the chronic absenteeism piece. You've seen us with the pictures that sometimes Ms. Dickens has in the Good News Report, the work that Dr. Branch and Dr. Brown both do in that area. We're going to absorb our literacy coaches, because we know that we need that for V L A and the programs associated for that. And summer school, we are thrilled, the Suffolk Public Schools is one of the few divisions that does not charge our students for summer school. But the money that we get from the state does not cover the 600 or 700 kids total when you add up elementary, middle, and the high school to do that. And we also feed our students for free during summer school, just like we do during the school year. And the last one that you see on there is Canvas, the learning management system. This was something that was not in the governor's budget, that cost us approximately $5.2 million. However, 75% of the school divisions in Virginia use Canvas. This is the warehouse that behows everything. So myself, along with 11 or 12 other superintendents, had those conversations with state senators, had those conversations with our delegates. I actually have spoke to Luke Torian and Prince William through Dr. Medei to make sure he understood the importance of this. Because if Suffolk Public Schools had to pay for Canvas, that would be approximately $230,000, which means that we then have to make adjustments in other places. Now, I'm happy to say that when General Assembly ended on Saturday the 22nd, Canvas was back in there. Now, we need to make sure there's going to be and remain in there when the governor does his final budget plan. So here's kind of getting to some of the things, Mr. McGee, that you were kind of alluding to, so we didn't want to steal the thunder until we got to this actual slide. These are some of the things that we wanted to do that, unfortunately, folks, we can't afford. The virtual instruction and tutoring, $1.2 million, that's what we were spending to support some of our teacher vacancies. That's our partnership that we had, right? The additional E L L teachers, Dr. Branch actually asked for seven. She actually asked for seven, because if you are an English language learning teacher, student, especially at Level One, before we even get to the time to take the W H E T A test, we wanted to make sure that we kept those classrooms smaller. They needed that support. We also had additional teachers requests for middle school and high school. That's because of the actual course requests of our kids, right around $254,000. Anytime we are going to have teachers, we wanted to put some teacher assistance in there, and the reason you see that number there is because some of our teacher assistants have now transitioned to teachers, which is a good thing, but they also have taken some of our other positions that we have, such as S3s, because it's more pay. We're putting this in there also because we know that with our Associate Teacher Program, we're hoping to have another pathway for that as well. Additional school councils, I know this is hard to see, because I have both Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Howell that work in that mental health field. We always want to be able to try to be able to provide as much support. We are still at the S O Qs, right? But we want to be well below the S O Qs based on some of the behaviors that we're seeing from our students, 217,000. A science specialist, this is our transition of us kind of moving things with Rachel Hirsch Brooks being the leader of the STEM Academy. We wanted to be able to have another science specialist, because it is our goal, we talked about long-term planning that Mr. Riddick mentioned, is our goal to be able to have a sustainable pre-K through 12 STEM model. Now, we have something at the elementary school with Booker T. We have grade project lead-away programs at the high school level with Lakeland and Nansman River with engineering and biomedical. But what about the middle school, right? That was going to be the next step that we've talked about. We've had discussions about having a magnet school or specialty center, but that was something we wanted to be able to do, but we couldn't afford that science specialist to do that at this time. When we are doing our spreadsheets and our categories, sometimes we will put on there deferred to 2526 or deferred to 2627. So I'm hoping that you will see that come back next year. And an additional pre-K classroom, that's not like that we need the pre-K classroom, that is only because everybody wants to do pre-K. And we just added one and an additional teacher assistant last year, right? When Dr. P. Shine puts that registration information out, and Ms. Dickens makes sure that everybody sees it, those slots and those applications come in quick. They come in quick from the state, that includes a local match. And kinda going back to our earlier discussion that Ms. Forzman has, we have a list of when schools got things, including this. It's the same thing for our copiers, desks, buses, two point five million dollars. This kinda goes back to your question that you had, Dr. Brittingham. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we do not ask the city for money for buses. We're one of the free locale, one of the few localities that does not do that. And the reason is, we need them to put our money into building those new schools. I mean, that's just a trade-off. So Ms. Forzman, Mr. Privet, Dr. Brown, they are so creative in the timing of when we put these requests in. The challenge is that the factories have a limited amount of buses they will make each year, and it's basically whenever your order comes in. That limited amount is because of the lack of workers due to inflation. And of course, the increasing maintenance of aging schools, we're putting it on there as roughly one million dollars. Folks, that's actually probably like six or seven, you know? For the board members, Ms. Howe, Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Riddick, and now Ms. Slinglof and Dr. Brittingham, you all have seen this. As a part of our CIP, when we used the three point five, seven million dollars to pay for the expansion of Northern Shores, they're when our preventative maintenance money, right? All the stuff that is the big rock items, roof replacements, HVAC. That's why you see that on some of the year-end requests that we may do. But this increase in maintenance of aging schools, when Northern Shores was done, we actually asked for seven million dollars for that, to try to make up for the four years that we lost. It was two consecutive years of requesting seven million dollars from the city, because we knew there were some things that we had to delay. Every year that our schools aren't built, all it does is increase the total cost. That's all it does. So when you add all those things up, this is the reason why we're asking the city for a specific amount, because look at how much we actually had to cut. Now, I wish we had a casino. I wish we had some other revenue streams, so like we can do like some of our other localities and ask for, you know, fourteen or fifteen million dollars from them. But I also know that we have to be realistic. And each year that we've asked for money from the state, all years but one, and they kinda gave it to us a little later, they have filled our requests. And it has to be that we ask for more money because of the increasing cost of things. So the amount of money that we are asking for in our budget is less than the amount of things that we couldn't do. To me, that's what being fiscally conservative is all about. It also means that those tough conversations that we have will continue. Cuz one of the things that we had to have the conversation with our departments and our principals was, we just can't do that this year. That's the change. So, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Wendy Forzman, cuz she's gonna provide you all the budget structure. Please make sure that you have your budget books available and ready, cuz that may also be referred to during her part of the presentation. Ms. Forzman?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon, and good evening. If you have your budget books, we're gonna talk a little bit about the structure of the book. Some things have changed this year, and I wanna make sure that we talk about them. So we're gonna talk about the organizational information and legal requirements. The book is set up in sections, so the first section is all organizational information. You'll see your pictures, you'll see the staff on the cabinet, you'll see the types of schools, you'll see our organizational chart, your strategic plan, goals, things like that. The next section is the executive summary. That is a very high-level summary of the budget. I give up, there's a page in there that talks about the assumptions in the budget, where we're getting the information from, the fact that it's the governor's proposed budget, how many positions we're putting in, what the raise is, what other expenses have been added. Very, again, high level. Then you'll see the expenditures done several ways. You'll see by program, and the page that has by program also has broken down by what is considered instruction or instructional support. Everything on that first page, by program, is instruction or instructional support. The second page of that, you will see the other categories, there are seven of them that the state has, so you'll see the attendance and administration, you'll see health services, you'll see transportation and facilities and maintenance and IT. All of those are the sections that the whole budget book is set up like. So when you see those programs, the very, in the executive summary, it shows the exact way that it's gonna appear in the book. Then you have, after the executive summary, you have the expenditures by program. Some programs, we break down by elementary, middle, and high, so the front page is the consolidated, if you will, all of them together. And then behind it, you'll see elementary, middle, and high. Every single program that has changes has the reason for those changes, and what they are and the amounts, at the end of the first pages of that program, before you get to the numbers of that program. So if you have a question about what increased and gifted, you can go to the page and find what increased and gifted, and there's an explanation as to why. If there is nothing there, it means that nothing has changed in that program. No FTEs, nothing significant, maybe we moved something from travel to materials, but nothing significant, okay? Then at the end of the expenditures by program, you have a glossary of terms for folks that aren't familiar with some of the terminology that we use in school divisions. And that is the entire structure of the book. It's about a hundred and seventy-some pages of a book. Now, in the book, as I said, there are seven categories as defined by the state, those seven categories are throughout the book. The title on the page tells you what it's a part of. If it says instruction, general education, you know that it's in all my instruction numbers. If it says instructional support, it's in the instruction numbers. If it says administration, it's in the administration numbers. Facilities and maintenance, all the facility maintenance numbers. So the titles on the program pages tell you where it is in all of the other places in the book, okay? Certain programs, like I said, are broken down by level, some aren't. For instance, media, the state does not require us to break that down by level. So there's only one page for media in there that encompasses elementary, middle, and high school. Others, like school counselors, the state requires us to tell them how many are elementary, how many are middle, and how many are high, so we have a breakdown for you. The same thing with general education, it's broken down by program, by level. So you have a consolidated page, and then behind that, you have the levels. There's a non-departmental page at the back, and no, that's not miscellaneous, I promise. I don't like that word, we don't ever use that word. That page is for items that come to us collectively, and then we give them out and allocate them out at year-end based on what really came in. And I'll give you a big for instance. We give every single teacher, a classroom teacher, a hundred dollar school specialty card. Some of them spend it, some of them don't. But at the end of the year, when we finish that program, we know which program that teacher was in, and we can allocate the expense to that program. But we don't know that upfront. So you will see under that non-departmental, the teacher card for a hundred thousand dollars. Another example of this would be the Wortman's Comp. We don't know who's gonna get hurt during the year and what we're gonna spend, so we don't allocate that, pre-allocate that to everything. We wait till the expenses come in, and then we allocate it out. So that is the reason for that non-departmental page. The columns on every single page, there are three, on every page that has numbers. They have an actual, which tells you what was spent twenty-three, twenty-four, the last fiscal year that we ended. Those totals batch what I gave you in September in the financial report for the previous year-end. So if you take those, you can go back to that report and look at that, and they match that. That's where I get the information from to put in that report. The revised column shows you where we currently are with our budget and where it's allocated by program and by expense. And then the proposed column shows you what we're proposing to do next year, what the superintendent has proposed for next year. The final column is an increase or decrease. The increase or decrease percentage just tells you what's the difference between current year and next year. It does not involve the actual column. Here, as I said, were the changes. This is an example of the changes, you can see how comprehensive this is. It starts with personnel, it tells you if we're going up and down in numbers of teachers, or if we move them. For instance, this year, our ELL teachers were all in general education. But because the state is now requiring us to put that in a different category, I've told you here that I've moved it to that category and what page it went to. And then on that page, I tell you where it came from, so you can cross-reference back and forth. I also tell you here, if you have differences in part-time, overtime, or stipend money, the state is now requiring us to report stipends separately from salary. Before, those were all in the salary. Now, we're required to put those separately. So I've been teasing those stipends out this year to put them in a separate line for you that used to be all in the salary lines. Now, you're gonna see them separately, and you're gonna begin to see more and more of those as we identify them, okay? Then, again, and operating costs, anything that changes, purchase services, test scoring, athletic trainers, all of those pieces, it's gonna tell you whether it went up or down. And it's gonna tell you why. And that's in every program in the book. So the budget is set up this way. Our budget is eighty-four percent people. It's people. It's their compensation, and it's their benefits. As you know, we don't set the benefit rates except for covering the cost of the healthcare. We don't set the VRS rate, which is the Virginia Retirement Rate, the state sets that, the Virginia Retirement System does. We don't set FICA, that's the federal government. We don't set the group life, we don't set any of those, any of those pieces. The hybrid folks now, the people that are on the hybrid retirement, which is everyone hired after 2014, we have to now match a percentage of the extra that they put towards their retirement. That's all part of that benefits package. So all of that is under benefits in the book. And you can, you'll see, when you get to your book, that it's about a hundred and seventy-nine million dollars that goes to just salaries and benefits. The difference is the sixteen percent that is the operating cost, and that's about thirty-eight million dollars. But of that thirty-eight million, when you start taking out utilities, bus fuel, things that just keep the buildings open and kids coming to school, you're fine that you're down to about between ten and fifteen million is all we have left to manage the schools, to give people a chance to have professional development, to do materials and supplies, to do any kind of maintenance, preventative maintenance for the schools. That's not a lot of money when you have twenty-one locations and fourteen thousand students and twenty-three hundred employees. Think about professional development, twenty-three hundred employees. We just don't have the money to do all that, because that's all that we have in the budget for that. And again, I'm gonna give you numbers, a lot of numbers, I'm sorry, but this is what this is. So the total operating budget, as proposed, is two hundred and fourteen point one million dollars. Salaries and benefits make up roughly a hundred and eighty million, which leaves us about, it's thirty-four million, sorry, thirty-four point two million, which is sixteen percent of the budget. And again, when you start taking that page that has things by object and taking out bus fuel, taking out electricity, water, all those, if you take those back out, you will see there's very little left to do anything else that we need to do. And while this is, we're talking about millions of dollars, as you all know, it takes millions of dollars to have maintenance contracts on everything that we have, to do the bulk pickup that the city charges us for, all the things that we have to do in order to maintain the schools. So here's what it looks like, if you look at the three columns, this is in your budget book in the executive summary, and you can see here that the operating fund, Grants Fund and Food Services Fund spent two hundred and thirty-one point five million dollars last year. The revised for current year, that's already adopted and approved by you all, is two hundred and forty-eight point five million. And then next year, it's two hundred and forty-four point five million dollars. Now, you can see the large negative there on the screen of forty-one point fifty-one percent. That is the lack of ESAR funds, CARES funds, lack of the five point eight million for the all-in grant, they've all gone away, and they're not been replaced. So we're down, back down to Title I, Title VI, Title II, all those kinds of ones that are coming from the federal government, and that is even uncertain at this point. Now, I will say this about the Grants Fund, because we have some new members. The Grants Fund is on a different cycle than our operating fund. Those funds run from October one to September thirtieth. So I don't detail those out for you here, because one, I don't even know the allocations yet for next year, I won't know those until August or September. And number two, it fluctuates so much, it's not possible to give you a clear picture. So rather than confuse people and confuse the public, we give it as total for Title I, total for VI, the items that we've received this year and what we expect to have for next year. Now, those, again, are up in the air at this point, but we try to be very high-level with the Grants Fund, because we just, it fluctuates year to year what happens with it. And it's on a different cycle. Food Services, that ten point three million, that is not funded by the operating budget at all. His funds are self-sufficient, coming from the USDA and what he collects for catering and for students purchasing à la carte items. So his money does not depend on the operating fund at all. And while I'm here, it won't, because I held him, his feet to the fire about spending money. If he overspends, the operating fund has to make it up. I'm not gonna allow that. So he and I have lots of conversations each month when I start looking at his money. What are you doing? You have this much over, you have this much under, what are we doing? What is, where's your next billing? Because I wanna make sure that I don't get a surprise at year-end, that I have to come to you and say, um, we overspent, and you gotta come out of the operating fund for it. That fund is supposed to be self-sufficient. So you can see that overall, it's a one point six-two percent decrease because, specifically because of the Grants Fund. As Dr. Gordon has said, there's a mandated three percent raise. We've proposed in this budget a three to three and a half percent raise, based on the experience step on the scale the person is on. Again, we try very hard to reward people for staying, that is the point of a pay scale. And the people at the top of the scale, which is way up at step thirty-four or thirty-five, depending on the scale, will receive the cost of living portion, okay? So we don't have a step for them to go to, so they can get the cost of living portion. The additional positions shake out like this, as Dr. Gordon has said, we have these five teachers, a staffing specialist. The custodial vacancies, and I wanna be clear with this, cuz this gets muddy because of this new contract we have, at the inception of this contract, February third, there were five vacancies. The budget had, I think it was a hundred and twenty-two custodians in it, there were five vacancies. I cannot take away vacancies I don't have, because you approve the number of positions. So I only took the vacant ones out and put those down in purchase services, okay? We know we're gonna have twenty to twenty-one more vacancies by year-end, but we can't give you a budget that doesn't have that responsibly. So we left those in, and as they leave and give us notice that they're going, we'll move that salary and benefits down to purchase services to cover what HES is then going to pick up. I've also, on the facilities and maintenance page for building services, as well as ground services, given you a reconciliation of, here's the amount of money that it's gonna cost for HES at this point, less where we got the money to cover those things, to show you that there's no budget impact on those things. So you will see that in there, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Then in addition to that, we had a part-time health services position that for three years had not been filled and had no money going to it, and typical me, I took it out, because I'm just that person. If you don't spend it, you're gonna lose it. So we took that out of the budget, so we have a point four added positions, if you look at the total in the revised column and the total in the new column. But that is the breakdown of it, cuz it's not, it gives you a better understanding of what's happening there. So the governor's proposed budget gave us a whopping three point two million, not all of it for the raise. He mandated some things, so I will show you that on a different slide, but three point two million is all we got, to give the three percent raise and to do other things. So it's not a lot of money this year from the governor. As you can see, that's not five point eight million to replace the all-in grant, it's not even half of that. So it was very limited money coming from the governor's proposed budget. The city investment, we're asking for seven million dollars, as Dr. Gordon said, to bring us to eighty-two point three million from the city, but basically, that's safety, security, student achievement, and then of course, the increased cost of operations. This slide, I'm gonna spend a few minutes with, because this details out for you and the public, what are we asking for from the locality, line by line? What are we asking, what do we get from the state? You can see that the raise is broken down, the state gave us two point three million dollars for the raise. Where can you find that? If you go to the revenue and you look for the compensation supplement that the state gave us under revenue, you'll see the difference between this year and next year, that it's two point three million dollars, that's how I know how much it is. It wasn't part of basic aid, it's a separate compensation supplement that they give us. They gave us money for, some of the money for the ELL teachers, as you know, they never fund it fully, excuse me, so the difference of the ninety-six hundred is being asked for by the city, or from the city. The Literacy Act compliance, five hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars from the city, because the state only provided enough money for sixty-three thousand dollars. Dual enrollment, nineteen thousand dollars, Saturday Academy, two hundred thousand dollars. The summer school's a little bit different, because they fluctuated that money, but the increase that they gave us for summer school doesn't cover everything for summer school. So we're asking the two forty-five to cover our summer school. We're gonna have to cut back summer school to meet that, but not by charging students. We're gonna have to be more careful with the money, and Dr. Branch and I have already been having discussions about how we're gonna do that and still meet the needs of all our students. The before and after-school tutoring, you can see the five hundred thousand dollars. The regional tuition has money in both sections, because as you can see, the state reduced our money and the cost went up. So the state reduced our money, cost went up, you can see the difference there. Then you have software, and I've listed the software out for you, the increased cost of software, that's hitting us on pretty much every piece of software we own. As software companies have increased costs, they pass them along to the customers, and we are not immune to that. Dr. Gordon's been over the athletic trainers and the SROs and the zero Is, private carriers, he's been over that, four hundred and fifty thousand. Cost of parts for our aging fleet, Mr. Privet has to bring up his cost for the fleet, because the fleet is aging, we try to purchase vehicles, but it is an aging fleet, and as fleets age, you have more things that go wrong, and so the cost of those parts has gone up because of inflation, but he also needs more parts, so he's given us that request. Then the inflation is backed into, basically, I took the difference of all the other pieces of this that we did not detail out, and you can see that the state money that was just And you can see that the state money that was just general money went for four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. And then we're asking the city to cover the cost of the two-fifty-four-seven hundred of inflation, which in a two-hundred-million-dollar-plus budget is not very much money. Then legal services, of course, he went over that as well. Here is the breakdown of the revenue in the operating fund. You can see that, uh, sixty percent of the money, almost sixty-one percent, is coming from the state, thirty-eight percent from the city. Federal revenue includes, uh, JROTC reimbursements that they reimbursed as part of that cost, uh, federal impact aid, and Medicaid, um, that we get reimbursed partially for. Those all go into federal revenue. Other revenues are things like sale of textbooks, sale of equipment, uh, rents that we receive for the, uh, renting of the buildings, those kinds of things. And that's a very tiny portion of our budget. This, this slide shows you the expense side and shows you that seventy-plus percent, seventy-two-plus percent of our budget is instruction and instructional support. Where can you find that number? You can find that number on the program page. The very first one at the bottom shows you all of the instruction equals that hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars. Each of those totals comes directly from that page. So if you go to the second page, you'll see all those other totals. You can see that administration and attendance. You can see that number on that second page of programs, and it'll show you exactly what is in that number. Okay? It's only two percent of our budget, which, as we've said before, is low. The eleven million dollars for pupil transportation does not include buses. That's the cost of that transportation. That's fuel, insurance, the cost of the care, the bus drivers and the, and the benefits for those bus drivers. All of that piece is in there. And that page details out every piece of that. Same thing with technology. Technology I've split into three sections in the back of the book. You will see those as technology instruction, which includes our ITRTs, uh, your CTE technology teachers. And then that's all of the things that support instruction, including about two-point-nine million in software, uh, that, and support all of our instruction. If you go to the next page, that's the technology department. That's Mr. Littlefield and his staff. And you'll see their detail of their items and what they cover. And then the final one is the administration. And those are things like our financial system. We have to pay for the software for that, and so you'll see that cost in there. Uh, you'll see the cost of, uh, the GPS system for the, the buses. You'll see, uh, the cost of, of anything that we have that's for administration to run software in that, in that particular program. So this is how it shakes out as far as, um, compensation. If you go to the page in the front of the book in the executive summary that shows by object code, you will see under salaries and benefits, the difference between the salaries and benefits current year and what we're proposing, seven-point-three million dollars. The raise makes up five-point-seven million of that. The, and that includes the staffing person for HR. The additional positions are teacher positions, five-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Non-regular day programs. I've waited till now to tell you this, but I do want you to understand that means what we used to call summer school now includes more. It includes Saturday Academy, and it also includes this tutoring before and after school that has never been included in that page before. The state requires us to report those there. They have been in grants prior to this, so they weren't reported in the operating fund. Now that they're coming to the operating fund, that page has been renamed from summer school, because it's not just summer school anymore, to non-regular day school. Okay? And that is the, that is the to, the title of the page, so you'll be able to see that. But that is what used to be called summer school, but it encompasses so much more. And the details there of what has been put in and the numbers I've given you. Then subs, part-times, and the stipends, I have that as a net because some of that went up, some of that went down. But the ba, the, the amount of all of those together is a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. So the increase for compensation, which is your salaries and benefits, is seven-point-three million dollars. When you look at operational increases, again, most of this is detailed on the page that I showed you before with, um, by state and by local. And you can see here all the different items based on what we've already talked about. And that total for those is two-point-eight million dollars. Other operational net is things that aren't detailed here. Some things went up, some things went down. We moved some things around. But the net of all of that is thirty thousand dollars. But that equals the two-point-eight million dollars. And then finally, here's the, the overall, seven-point-three for personnel, two-point-eight for operational, total of ten-point-one million dollars, which is what the operational budget went up from last year to our proposed this year. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
I know we've just taken in a lot of information. I do want to give board members an opportunity to ask questions if you have any off the top of your head. But, um, before I open the floor for that, I just want to give a couple, a heads up on a, a couple dates that Dr. Gordon and Ms. Forsman are requesting feedback from you so that they can be responsive in time for our meetings coming up. Um, any questions you have about this? End of business day, please e, email them to Dr. Gordon so he can collaborate with Wendy by the end of business on Tuesday, the eleventh of March at 5:00 PM. Those are just questions, general questions. If there are requests you want to make, uh, changes you want to make requests for in the budget book, um, if you could email those by end of business on March twentieth to Dr. Gordon, that will allow, um, all of the moving parts that, that Ms. Forsman will have to manipulate to respond so that she can get back with a thorough response for us. Those are the two dates, correct? Nothing else? Um, I want to point out again, as Ms. Forsman shared, the beginning of every category has a narrative. It's, it's a good summary, and, um, it spells out what went up and what went down and why. So start there. Make sure you, you give attention to that. Um, the non-departmental category she was talking about, in case you haven't flipped through and found it, is page one-seventy. On page thirty, where it breaks down, um, basically where our budget goes, based on what you said, about twenty-two percent of our operating fund is set by the state and federal. It's not negotiable, it's not even up to us. It just is what it is. Um, does anyone have any immediate questions right now? I know you want to take this home, pore over it, process it, read it five or six times. Is there anyone that has anything right, right at the moment?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to extend gratitude, Dr. Gordon, great presentation. Wendy, great presentation. Looking forward to do a deep dive through this.
Thank you both. It, um, I do want to ask, Dr. Gordon, are we able to get a copy of your part of the presentation? So as we're dialoguing with the community, if it be in a town hall or a civic league, the bullet points are there versus trying to flip through the book and highlight the key information?
Sure. So, uh, the entire presentation is going to be uploaded to the website, correct? Um, so you'll be able to do that. And we can also, um, you have the link in case anyone wants to be able to, uh, view it again. Is there something specific you were looking for, Ms. Hall?
No, I just, I, as I was listening to it, I, I was just thinking, like, having a conversation with the community, like the middle school sports, the explanation there. I don't want just that, though, because I'm sure the other six members have other questions that'll be asked of them. It was just, your, your overview was helpful, I think, as a conversation starter and a conversation guide as we engage with the community. Um, did you say that Ms. Forsman's part is attached to it? Because I specifically was going to ask for Ms. Forsman's slide twenty-eight, where it breaks down what we are using from the city and what we are using from the state.
Yes, this entire, yeah, this entire slide deck, Ms. Hall, will be available for anyone to take a look at it. And, you know, if you guys, when you're having your meetings, your town halls and stuff, you know, just let us know when those dates are. And, you know, we, most of the time when you have yours, you text me, I try to a, answer the questions. But if you all are having your meetings just the next day, just let us know, just send them to us, like I know that you all did last year. And we'll definitely get you the information within twenty-four hours.
Okay. Um, if there's nothing else, I think that you both are done. Technically, with nothing else being there, this meeting is adjourned.